Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Clarkston Independence District Library Board of Trustees meeting for August 15, 2022. The meeting is called to order at 6:35. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, in the principle with liberty and justice for all.
Move call, please.
Jan Gaffney, Abson, Allison, Ben, Keesland. Here. Nancy Moon.
Eric.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Here.
Michelle.
Here.
Mary.
Excellent. I'll accept a motion for approval of the agenda.
Smooth.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Call to the public.
Yes, the public is here.
Can I just sit here?
Yes.
We're having more and more trouble dealing.
We understand.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are having our fall book sale on September 20 through the 24th. The 20th is preview night for members of the Friends, and then the 21st through the 24th are open to the public. We had a book sale subcommittee chaired by Jim Droplet, and he and his committee came up with some great ideas to make our book sale even better this year in terms of where things are in the room and how people are trained. So they did a good job, and I think it's going to improve even beyond what we've always done. And our cart sales, Joanne brought us that for the whole year up through July have been $2,323.
Wow.
That's great. I mean, she does a great job on that.
It looks very nice.
It does. It looks nice, and she does a good job.
She does.
And July was our best month in the whole year so far, was $431. So it's improving even. So that is my...
Thank you. That will close the call to the public. I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Second?
I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. First, seconded. We have nine items. Has anyone discussed any one item in particular? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Library statistics.
All right. I just wanted to point out that the numbers are getting back to normal pre-COVID levels, so they're looking more familiar. In July, we had 8,886 visitors, over 27,000 circulations, so things are starting to feel more normal.
That's actual news.
27,000 so far. Yes. That's good.
Okay. Library directors report.
Okay. In terms of general update, on Saturday, July 31st, our summer reading finale took place, sponsored by the Friends of the Library. This family event featured outdoor games, these painting, a balloon artist, Maker Space demos, the awarding of prizes, and a food truck. We had great attendance and lots of positive feedback. On Friday, August 12th, the Book Note for the Youth Area in memory of Deb Lauter and the sofa in the teen lounge were delivered and installed. The Final Sevens project is to create signage recognizing these new additions. We've already seen library visitors settling into this furniture, and they seem to be enjoying it. Settling into it as if it's been there all along, which is always my favorite part. The board game collection that was mentioned in a previous report is now in circulation and being enjoyed by library users. The system of weighing the game at check-in to determine if a full inventory of all the pieces needs to be made is actually working out really well. This collection is located on the shelving next to the self-checkout station that is the senior area, so if you are in the area, take off your coat, please stop over there. We have received our 2022 penal fine check in the amount of $56,205.35. In 2021, the amount we received was $62,795, so this is down a little bit. But this amount fluctuates for a variety of reasons from one year to the next. We always budget conservatively to assure that we are not surprised by a shortfall that might require budget cuts. This year, we actually only budgeted for $50,000, so there shouldn't be any issues or regrets to that, but we're likely much more than that. We've also received both of our 2022 state aid checks. The first check was $18,355, and the second was $18,613.16, for a total of $36,968.16. In 2021, we actually received two checks, both at $15,292, for a total of $30,584. This year, we budgeted $15,000 for state aid. We budget in anticipation of receiving the first check, but if budget issues arise at the state level, it is sometimes the second check that may be eliminated in the interest of balancing their budget. So this is another situation in which conservative budgeting allows us to prevent unpleasant surprises in terms of balancing our own budget for the year. And then in terms of collaborations, in celebration of the passing of the Library's village and our fourth win in the library category of WID's Vote for the Best, the Friends of the Library will be sponsoring a family-friendly event on Monday, August 22nd, from 6 to 8 p.m. This party will feature an inflato lab circle course with a slide for the kids, and a basketball bungee and baseball relay for teens and adults. There will also be music, ice cream, hot candy, and a photo booth, so we hope everyone will stop by the library and enjoy the fun.
Excellent. Good news.
And thank you to the Friends for sponsoring.
Okay, let's move to regular business. Number one is the appointment of a full-time innovations librarian.
Okay, so at the July meeting, the Library Board approved the creation and posting of a full-time innovations librarian position. We received 15 submission packets. The selection committee consisted of David Silverman, who is our head of bill services, Bill Bowman, who is our IT manager, Marilyn Pomeroy, and myself. We interviewed four candidates and narrowed the field to our top two. Representatives were called for both candidates. Upon further discussion, a top candidate was chosen. The selection committee recommends Leah Bruce. Leah has a varied background and interesting experience. She has a degree in publishing and has worked in design. She worked in the Maker Space at the Novi Library and is currently a reference librarian at the Springfield Township Library. In her interview, she exuded creativity, a can-do spirit, and approachability. She grew up going to the Clarkston Independence District Library, and her responses in the interview reflected a knowledge of the community we serve. When asked what innovation means to her, she talked about inclusivity and the importance of having something for everyone. She felt that the key was focusing on what might be missing in the library's offerings and using creativity to fill those gaps. She also wanted to reach out to those in our service population that aren't currently being reached and work to build new connections. She has the important technical abilities that will allow us to expand our maker programming, but was also excited about innovative programming that is not necessarily technology-based. She expressed interest in collaboration and cross-departmental projects, and the selection committee felt that she would be a good fit with our current staff. The selection committee recommends Leah Bruce as the new full-time innovations librarian. Based on her education, experience, and in relation to other staff, we propose a starting salary of $48,000 to be adjusted to $50,000 in January after an orientation period. While this is a new position, it was created by making changes to the organizational structure. There is adequate funding budgeted for this position, and no adjustments are anticipated to cover benefits.
Any questions?
You have her resume, her cover letter, you have the position posting, your work packet as well.
All of that is in our packets?
Yep.
All here.
Young and enthusiastic.
Yes. What is Maker Space?
So Maker Space is the programming that we do, things like our 3D printer. We have a laser cutter known as a blow forge. And those are the kinds of things that we bring out and do actual programming. People can do their own designs and create different things that way. We also have a cricket. So a cricket, which is another type of cutter. So those are the kinds of sort of high-tech programs that we do.
Sort of workshop.
Yeah, workshops and all those things, yes.
So a lot of innovations are technical in nature, but some of them are just redesigning and improving what we all services we already offer. So a fresh set of eyes.
Absolutely. And in terms of Maker Space, Maker Space can be anything that you make. So those are some of the directions we've been going in terms of a technological standpoint. But in the past, Makers has also included our take-and-make bags during COVID. We did some knitting and crocheting, take-and-make bags, and embroidery, and other kinds of sort of hands-on projects that were not necessarily technological innovation. But we do have some maker equipment that is technologically based, and Leah has experience from working in Novi's Maker Space of how to use those kinds of things, so she would be a great asset. Bill buys those sorts of things, our IT manager, but he is not a programmer, so he can support those things, but we need somebody who would be the one who does the programming.
Sounds really good.
Good. Any other questions, comments? All right. In that case, I will accept a motion.
I make a motion that we hire Leah Bruce for our full-time innovations librarian at the initial salary of $48,000.
I'll second. Do we know when she's starting?
Yeah, she would like to start on September 12th. And also, Joanne, including your motion about $50,000 after the orientation period.
And as of January 1st, we will increase her salary to $50,000.
So it's been moved and seconded that we hire Leah with a salary of $48,000 to become $50,000 after an orientation period at the beginning of the year with the standard benefits package of a full-time employee. And that's something that's beneficial in these positions. So if there are any other comments or questions, in that case, I'll accept. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Please convey that we'll be delighted to welcome her to the family.
Thank you. We're glad to have her September 12th.
All right.
And you do have in your packet as well that full benefits package.
Yeah.
It's all spelled out.
All included there. Okay, now for the fun stuff, our second quarter financial review.
Okay. So you have the financial review handed out to you separately and put it, it is in the packet, but there's also a couple of budget adjustments, and I'll talk a little bit about those as well. Okay, so in terms of revenue, we've talked a little bit about revenue in my address report that the penal fine money has come in, that the state aid money has come in. We're continuing to see those property taxes trickle in, and there's nothing of any concern there. In terms of wages, so if you go into that 706 area, we are at this point running a little under budget because we didn't have an employee that left, and so that position has been empty for a little while, so we've got a little bit of savings there. We're a little bit under budget as well in our part time, so that's good because I know that we'll see as we get toward the end of this whole year, the need for additional staffing, so we should be in good shape for that. Everything else I'm seeing is pretty good in terms of under budget. Professional contract services, that 818 line is a smidge over budget. I think that mostly has to do with some of the projects that we were doing early in the year. We've done some professional work on, I think, specific things that we did that are different than usual, some consulting for graphics work for the village and things like that that were outside of our normal things. So those are early in the year, but will not be done later in the year. So this year, that particular line item is a little loading a little front heavy. Okay, so in terms of special events, the programming budgets, those are all in really good shape. The telephone budget is a little bit over budget at this point. I'm going to look into that and see if there is going to change in the rates that we need to be aware of. We might need to make a slight budget adjustment. I won't suggest anything like that until later in the year. Insurance is another one that always looks like it's over budget, but that one has to be completely paid off by July. So that one, we pay installments, four installments all before July, and then we're done paying that off for the rest of the year. So we are in good shape there. That's completely paid. And so that money that's in that line item is actually surplus because there was the reimbursement from that pool of money. There are not as many liabilities and things like that that they return in fact to the So we're actually well on our budget and paid off in that particular line. Conferences and workshops and the building budget, so the building budget looks like it's actually over budget. It's not actually over budget. There's a difference in when the money came in. So the reason it looks like it's over budget is because we had to pay to have the wall fixed in my office, but the insurance company is reimbursing that. So we even made the payment with the contractor, but the reimbursement check came two weeks after the end of the quarter. So it looks like it's over budget, but it's not. It's now actually flushed again, so we're going okay there as well. Any questions on any of those?
I'm sorry.
Carry. Yeah, good. Okay, so I am going to recommend a couple of budget adjustments, only because there were a couple of projects that we did. So you have in front of you a tiny little spreadsheet with only three lines. I'm going to recommend a $5,000 budget adjustment from fund balance to 958, which is our conferences and workshops line as for staff training. You'll remember that we actually did not put as much money in that budget line in 2022 because we weren't sure we were going to be able to do an all-staff training day. We weren't sure we were going to be able to send anybody to the Initiative in Library Association conference because we weren't sure it was even going to happen in person. Virtual ones are less expensive, but those things are happening this year, so I'd like to put some money in that line for sure that we can send some people to those conferences and do that.
Which line is that, 9958?
Yep. And essentially, what would have happened is last year, when we weren't able to do that training, that money would have reverted back to fund balance. So this would be just a transfer from money that didn't get used last year. In terms of, the next item is 975, which is that building line item, $2,000 for some concrete work that we had done, that we were hoping to do potentially last year. So that one also reverted back to fund balance, but we weren't able to get it done, so we added that in. So if you wouldn't mind putting that back in from fund balance, $2,000 there, and also $2,000 similarly for irrigation repairs and upgrades that could not be done last year due to the contractors just not having the staffing to be able to get that work done. So it got, like so many other things got back from it.
Would you like a motion on each one of those separately?
I think you could probably just do a motion that would approve the recommended budget adjustment as presented, and I will put this into the minutes.
Okay.
And that will make it easy for you, okay?
I will accept that motion.
I move to move the fund balance as recommended.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we transfer monies from the fund balance into line items 5, 958, and 975 as presented. Okay, any comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Okay, number four, discussion of emergency sick leave.
Okay. I have the number, or maybe I don't.
A trustee representing the city.
Oh, I missed number three. Just back up a moment.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. Check that off ahead, so. Library Board trustee representing the city, very important.
As defined in the district library agreement, the governing body of Clarkston Independence District Library is a seven-member board with five trustees appointed by Independence Township and two trustees appointed by the City of Clarkston. The terms are three years, with the current term covering January 1st, 2020, to December 31st, 2022. The entire board will be going through the appointing process this fall, with the township and the city appointing and/or reappointing the trustees representing their communities. Trustees must be residents of the community they represent. Unfortunately, Ann Rose, who has been representing the City of Clarkston this term, is no longer a city resident and has stepped down from CIDL's board. We are so grateful to her for her contributions to the library's success and her many years of service, both as a trustee and as a children's librarian. Nancy Moon and I have been seeking a city resident who would be interested in being appointed to complete her term ending December 31st, 2022, as well as being reappointed to serve for the upcoming term of January 1st, 2023, to December 31st of 2025. And I believe we have a candidate in the audience. Love to be able to make time this evening with Maggie Sands.
To enjoy those. Yes. Thank you. Nancy, would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion that Maggie Sands, who happens to be my neighbor, be approved or appointed as the second trustee representing the village of Clarkston on the library board.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a third and a fourth.
Thank you very much. Okay. Maggie, do you want to say a little bit about yourself? Aside from just my neighbor?
I'd be glad to. So I actually grew up in Clarkston, so I've been coming to Slade Library from the very first library I ever attended. I grew up on Rattley Lake Road on a small hobby farm there, and I've lived in Michigan on and off for my life. Spent a little time at Michigan State in my undergraduate, Boston University Graduate School. I worked in Michigan Legislature for a while, if you remember Tom Middleton, our state representative then, and then later for the Speaker of the House and working on policy. I currently work for Walmart Corporation, have been there 18 years, various capacities both domestic and international. And my current responsibility is domestic, and it's on community relations, so it really ties in nicely to thinking about the library and its relationship to the community. I actually technically work out of Bentonville, Arkansas, but I commute back and forth and work out of my home as well. So I just think the library, I mentioned it to Julie, I think it's a successful library, is absolutely vital to, you know, a robust community and its contribution backs the community. So I'm thrilled to be able to just be a little part of it if I get finally approved and be able to join you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. And on that note, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried, and we're happy to welcome you. Thank you.
So the next step in the process is that I will pull together this information, and Maggie's providing me with her formal application. I will submit it to the city stating that you are recommending that they officially appoint her to the library board. So you've done your part, and now the city will do their part. I'll be contacting Jonathan and find out when he can put that on the agenda. So thank you so much for just zooming in here and helping us with this.
I'm thrilled to do it, so thank you so much for being so welcoming.
Thank you. And now, number four, discussion of the emergency paid sick leave policy.
Okay, so in June of 2020, the Library Board approved an emergency paid sick leave policy in response to the COVID pandemic. This policy provided paid sick time for all employees for being tested or tested positive for COVID in an effort to discourage the temptation to work while sick and risk infecting coworkers. The policy was originally effective until December 31st of 2020 and was extended by the board through 2021. In May, the board determined it would be prudent to again extend the policy through August 31st of 2022, stating that it would, should be reviewed again at the August 2022 meeting to see if an additional extension would be needed. We are still experiencing occasional staff outbreaks and want to continue to encourage staff to get tested and stay home until they recover from COVID in order to prevent further spread of this virus. So it is my recommendation that be extended till the end of the year. We're not seeing a lot of outbreaks, but it is really nice for those who are testing positive to know that they will be able to pay their rent and take care of themselves, and they're not tempted to work when they're sick.
And since it's still circulating in the community and members of the community are still getting sick, frequently with no idea how they, or how it got them. Okay, I will accept a motion.
I make a motion that we approve. We approve the emergency paid sick leave policy to cover April 1, 2020 through December 31, 2022. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we continue this policy. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Okay, number five, the review and approval of an RFP for accounting services.
Okay. In 2019, the library went through an RFP process for accounting services. The RFP was for an accountant for one year with the option to extend the contract for up to two years for a total of a three-year contract. The library has been working with the contracted accountant selected through this process for 2020 through 2022. We are approaching the end of that three-year period, so it's time to go through the RFP process again. Included in your packet is a draft of an RFP. Upon approval, we would post the RFP, accept proposals in September, and make a recommendation to the board in October or November, with the new contract beginning January 2023 to allow for a transitional period if a new accountant is selected. And so this is Jan Gaffney and I working on this project along with the two administrative assistants, Nicole and Debbie. So that's kind of our working committee on that.
Cool.
Any questions on that RFP? The work that's being done is no different than what it was before. If you're looking for a difference, you're not going to.
I thought it was missing.
No, we need to go through that process again.
Looks like we read this before.
Yes. It's been working out fine. I don't know if the current accountant wants to continue or not. She may, she may not, I'm not sure, but we need to go through that process again, so.
Okay, so I will accept a motion.
I move to approve the RFP for accounting services as presented.
You'll second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the RFP for accounting services as presented. We've seen this before. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
Julie, how many responded the last time?
Oh, I knew you were going to ask me that. I would say four or five.
Oh, so we should get a reasonable number.
Yeah. We ended up selecting, the accountant that we currently have had been working for the firm that we were previously contracted to, but she went out on her own. And interestingly, when we did the RFP the last time, she put in for it, but the firm did not. But we did get some from other firms, and there is a firm where one of the accountants who is part of that firm is a local in the township, and I anticipate seeing that one come in as well. And I will definitely be reaching out to him if he feels interested, so. Because he was, he kind of wanted to do it the last time, but it just didn't work out that way.
Does the accountant that works for the Friends, does he apply?
He could, but if he were to, I actually talked to him about that. He probably will not apply. He did not the last time because I said that if he applied, then he would probably have to stop being the accountant for the Friends, that we couldn't let him do both. That would be sort of a conflict of interest. The whole idea is to separate, separate that out. And then I asked him if he had an interest in switching. He said, you know what, I would really rather keep the client I have. That doesn't seem like a very nice thing to do, so. He very generously kept the little client and let go of the big, because we're the bigger client.
You're still the client. I'm sure the Friends appreciate that.
He was very, he was very sweet of him, though. He's like, you know what, I get a lot of business via word of mouth, and I don't want to do that, so.
Hey, good for him.
Yeah, he's a really good guy.
Application's welcome, right?
Yes.
Indeed.
All right. Number six, establishing a regular meeting schedule for 2023.
Okay. We like to do this early to make sure that you all don't get bumped off to your favorite nights by children's programming. That does, and can, it does have it. So, let's see, so if we want to, I'm just going to get something else here.
As long as you have the, the block.
Okay, so in January, we like to have that meeting sort of early. I don't think you want to have it on January 7th, though. Are we, first of all, I guess we want, are we keeping Monday night?
Works for me.
Yep. Do we still like 6:30, or do you want to? It makes no difference to me.
Six o'clock, is that better for people?
I can do whenever. I'm retired.
Yeah. I don't want either. Does the potential new... Does the potential new Bethune Board member have a preference?
No, I think Mondays are fine and six, 6:30 is kind of no difference, I'm fine.
Okay, okay. Makes no difference to me. We have people trained at 6:30 now, if the Monday's at 6:30.
Yeah.
We have people trained that at 6:30 now. It used to be six in the morning, it's 6:30, I need to toggle back.
Now it's 6:30. 6:30 is fine.
Okay, so in January, I think January 2nd is awfully.
January 9th is better.
I think January. Anyway, okay, so let's do the ninth. February, we do not want to do, you should try to pick one in the middle of the month to kind of make sure that we're allowing for any reports from the accountant or whatever, have a little bit of time to get those pressed and that sort of thing. The 20th is a holiday, so in February, maybe the 13th.
13th.
Any objections to the 13th? Okay. March.
13th?
I think so. I'm just double checking and making sure I wrote down when. Easter, Easter is in April. Okay, so on March the 13th.
Maybe I'll go to calculators or computers.
You notice I made mine on paper. Okay, so April, Easter weekend, Easter is on the 9th. So I don't know how you feel about that Monday or if you would defer the 17th.
Doesn't matter. So you want to go ahead and do the 17th?
Sure.
Just do 17th away from.
Yep. May, the middle of the month, would be the 15th.
Yeah.
Sound okay?
Sounds good.
Okay. June.
12.
12.
I mean, keeping with the middle of the month.
Yep.
There, you're with middle of the month.
When do we close the library in June, do you remember? What's the last day of, it's the last day of school, right?
The last day of school is, I haven't written that, hang on.
The week before.
Sundays, we would, we would begin closing on June 11th. That would be our first Sunday close because school, last day of school is the 9th.
Okay, not that it makes a difference to us, but so that'll be right after we have our first closure.
Okay, so then in July, do you want the 10th or the 17th?
10th sounds great.
Like 10th, 10th is great.
Just throwing it out.
10th it is. August 14th?
Sure.
September 11th or 18th? That will be your budget meeting, your budget approval.
Do you like it earlier in the month?
I do, let's do the 11th, only because if something happens and we need to reschedule, that gives me enough time to post it probably because that would be a public hearing.
And then we can move it to the 18th and we can move it.
Yeah, we can move it if some crazy thing happens. October 16th or the 9th? If it's 16th, if you get, if we get too early in the month, you won't get your reports from the accountant.
16th, that it sounds like. We're reading the room.
Yeah. Now, in November, 13th?
Sure.
And December 11th, 13th? 11th maybe, I think we tried to do December 1st a little bit earlier.
Yeah, right, 11th is okay.
11th is okay. Okay, so let me read those back. I have January 9th. I have February 13th. I have March 13th. I have April 17th. I have May 15th. I have June 12th. I have July 10th. I have August 14th. And I have September 11th. October 16th. November 13th and December 11th.
Right, all at 6:30.
All at 6:30. So I'm good?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. But do we, now, do we need to vote on that individually?
No, all you need to do is approve the resolution setting the 2023 library board meeting schedule. The resolution is in your packet. And given those dates, you would just do, do the resolution as planned. But we do have to do a roll call vote.
Do you want to know about any known conflicts? I know I'm projecting here.
Absolutely.
The January 9th, I will let you, out of town.
Okay, that's fine.
So did you want a motion?
I will accept a motion.
Okay, I move to approve the resolution setting the 2023 library board meeting schedule as discussed.
2023.
What did I say?
2023.
2023, what did I just say?
You didn't say anything.
He said 2023.
2023. Time keeps flying by. Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution setting the 2023 library board meeting scheduled. No comments? Okay, all those in favor?
How, how?
Oh, we're going to do roll call.
Sorry.
Yep, it's fine.
Allison McIdesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Mary LaHawley?
Yes.
And Rochelle?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, I have a question.
I hope I can answer.
When do we want to hold a workshop on the budget?
So that is, that is a very good question. I'm thinking that we want to do that probably the, probably the last week of August or the first week of September.
You're talking about this, this year?
Mm-hmm, yeah. What would work for everyone?
Monday for 29th?
I don't get a work until 5, so I could be here at 6.
The last week of August works better for me. It is the last week of August. But is it, do we want a Monday day or any other day?
Sure.
It doesn't have to be a Monday, we could do Tuesday. Tuesday looks good on my calendar. Or Thursday, September 1st. Tuesday, the 30th would be good.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the 30th, is that a good one?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
And what time do we want to do this?
Could we do 5:30 or 6?
Sure.
Is that too late?
No.
What time is that?
6 o'clock?
Yeah.
Then we, we get held up a worker, I won't be especially.
What was the date?
Thank you.
Tuesday, August 30th?
Oh, yeah.
And I'm sorry, what was the time now?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
Thank you.
And I'm most reserved, you're ready?
Yes.
Yep, that will be, that will be a special budget workshop meeting where we roll our sleeves and talk budget from the budget board. Okay. Thank you, I meant to put that in while I was talking about the finances and it just slipped right by me.
Well, since I've had a couple things slip right by me, I've got to be there. Okay. At this time, I will accept a motion for adjournment. So move.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Nays? Zero. This has passed and the meeting is adjourned at 7:13 AM. Thank you, good meeting. We uncovered a lot in a short period of time.